Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the May 30th, 2020 Select Board Meeting. I'd like to call the Select Board to order. Emmy, do you have, you want to call your group to order as well?
Uh, yeah, I'll call the Board of Health to order.
Great. And I think we're the only two groups here. Super. So thanks for joining. Our agenda is pretty straightforward today. We want to talk first about election safety and then discuss recall election and potential timing. So what I would suggest that we do is I'm
Mark, it's Vanessa.
Hi, Vanessa.
Hi, I'm present, but I'd like to recuse myself for this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. What I would suggest we do is the following. Laura, I'm wondering if you can provide an update about the Board of Registitors meeting that took place yesterday. I then would like to suggest that the Board of Health kind of initiated a discussion. I know that it was yesterday, right, that you met and we talked a little bit. The goal from here is to hear your thoughts on election safety. What's the best way to allow for it? And specifically how it relates to timing issues of one and two elections. The Select Board then wants to have a discussion related to how we proceed. There are not a lot of updates, but you know, little updates that we got yesterday regarding where the legislature stands, but the, I guess the top billing of that is there aren't no official updates. There's nothing that has passed to the governor or been signed by the governor as of now. So that's kind of where we stand, but we want to make sure that we understand the issues surrounding an election. Obviously, we're very concerned with, with safety of residents as well as the workers that would be there. So that's, that's our kind of mission this afternoon. So if that, is that all right with other board members to proceed that way?
Yes, thanks.
Great. So Laura, could you please provide an update about your meeting of yesterday with the Board of Registitors?
So I think Ray started mentioning a little bit, the Board of Registars did meet yesterday. It was what a five hour long meeting. Is that right?
It only seemed like five hours. I think it was really only three.
Little bit of exaggeration there, but it did seem that way. Um, but we did accomplish that. Um, we have a set of rules and procedures for the public hearing has been placed. Um, that will be going out to everyone definitely early next week. The public hearing date is set for June to start on June 29th. We will be meeting every day continuously until the public hearing is completed, subject to the Board's availability. Uh, we will be meeting from four to seven, yeah. Yeah. Um, and we're, I believe that's about it. Notice will be going out to the public as well at the same time too, early next week.
Great. So it, the Board approved having hearings. You mentioned the timeframe and to accomplish that based on how long it takes to do it.
Correct. Uh, it's probably going to take a couple of weeks.
Got it. Great. Thank you. Did the Board discuss election, any election related issues at all? Or was it focused solely on the, the recall issue?
It was focused solely on the, the public hearing, but I'd also like to clarify that the Board of Registars doesn't usually get into the conversation of elections. Their, their involvement with elections is generally if there's any kind of a recall or a recount or a question, um, they don't use, other than to make sure that I stay out of trouble. They just pretty much stay out of it.
Got it. Great. Thank you. Board members, any, any questions?
Oh, I joined yesterday for the second part and Lori did a great job. Ray, you guys hung in there. It was a long meeting, but I thought it was very well done.
Thank you for that vote of confidence.
I did not tune in, but I'm assuming that, um, what is the, on the agenda for the hearing is what was, what we heard you relay at our meeting on Wednesday, that any objections to the form, et cetera, of the petition would be, could be brought in such a hearing.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thanks.
Carla?
Mark, Laura or Ray, is the, the accomplishment or the goal to have 912 people via Zoom or whatever to, is that the process?
No, there are 912 signatures objected to. Um, it's, it's not a total of 912 voters because some of them are objected to more than once. There are double objections on particular signatures, but the, the goal is to go through each one of those and so that basically the Board's responsibility would be to vote whether or not to accept that objection or to keep it as is, as being a certified signature. But everyone will have the opportunity to, um, provide their proof or testimony and I'll let Ray fill in a little bit more from there.
Okay, so the way this hearing is setting up, we have Vanessa is represented by counsel. So that's one side. The other side consists of the petitioner's group. The, um, in general, they have designated Dan Anslinger as their spokesperson. But we did not require, because it'd be really hard to do, we did not require all 900 and whatever it is, members of the petitioner's group who, uh, have who signatures a challenge. We did not require something from them saying, yes, I agree that Dan Anslinger is my spokesperson. Um, we're just taking it on his representation that he is the spokesperson, but we're also allowing any, um, interested party who wants to, who says Dan Anslinger is not my representative. We're giving them an opportunity to present, um, uh, whatever information they have to the, uh, the Board separate and independent from that. The goal is not to have to, um, hear a lot of individual testimony about individual signatures at the hearing. The goal is to have all of that come in ahead of time. Um, so we have set deadlines for submissions. One round of submissions on the 15th of June, a second round on the 22nd of June. So that when we get to the hearing, for many of these signatures, all of the information that is necessary to make a judgment will already be, um, uh, in the record and the Board doesn't have to take any live testimony. And with luck, um, then we will be able to group some of these so that we don't necessarily have to look at each individual one. Um, you know, one at a time, we'll be able to group them. These are all the ones that are in the same category and can be handled as a, as a group. We won't know that for sure until we see what evidence comes in, in the, uh, the pre-hearing evidence. And so some of that we'll have to, we'll, we'll have to make adjustments on the fly. Worst case scenario, we have to look at each one of those signatures individually and make a judgment. But that, uh, the procedures are in place that may enable us to, to move more quickly than that. That's our hope.
So for example, John Doe from 1,000 Main Street lets you know in advance that that was their signature, submits that, and you have it in front of you when the hearings start. And then Vanessa and her attorney can say, we object?
Well, no, I thought, I, the burden of proof is on Vanessa and her attorney. So they can't just say, we object. They need to present some kind of evidence.
Okay.
That it's not the person's signature. And, um, for example. And, um, so it may be, for example, and I say we can group these, that, um, that there are, let's say 10 signatures for which we have a, the only evidence in the record is an unsworn email. Okay? So we can say, all right, well, all of the ones that for which that is the only, um, evidence in the record. And the challenge is that it's not a genuine signature. That we're going to treat all of those the same and, um, we'll either accept them or we won't accept them, but we'll treat those the same. So we've done 10 all at once and we don't have to, presumably that will shorten things. Um, obviously there will be some about which the, the information is more vigorously contested, we'll have to deal with them.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry, Tom. Any other questions from the Board? Okay. Um, so what I thought we would do here, if we could, is ask the Board of Health to, I guess, start the discussion. Uh, I know that you, again, you started a discussion yesterday about this. The concerns here relate to how do we do the best that we possibly can to assure the safety of residents and poll workers? And we're very interested in getting your opinions as the Board of Health in terms of what, what seems to make sense. If there are particular concerns that you may have that will help us to make this decision on time. And one of the issues that has come up is that there is a bill that passed the House that included some measures, including kind of no-fault absentee ballots that would extend that provision that previously had expired. It would extend it to August 1st. In talking to our state senator yesterday, and I sent a memo to the Board, to the Select Board, kind of summarizing that discussion, it's not clear what the Senate is planning to do with that bill. Whether that date will stay or go or be adjusted is not clear at this point. From the Senate's point of view, they're trying to get town meetings resolved, um, which as of now are not. And that was their expectation from the House bill. The House bill had some other things added to it. And the Senate has not taken action on it yet. They're not meeting again until Monday. And we don't know what, what will, what will happen from that. So we're still kind of in the position of trying to understand how do we provide the, um, the safest environment possible? And so we're hoping that you folks can chime in and we can kind of a joint discussion and questions about your thoughts on, on how we should proceed here.
Um, Mark?
Yep.
I was just wondering if we should have Ray stay with us for the duration or if, or if his time could be better utilized doing other things if we're moving away from a legal conversation now.
Other Board members, what are your thoughts?
Certainly if, if other Board members have questions, I think they'll have questions for Ray. That's, I'm just mindful of, being mindful of everyone's time.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's going to be a long meeting, but I don't, you know, I don't think I have any questions, but I really don't know.
Okay.
So why don't we ask Ray to stay with us? I think that makes more sense. So if a question does come up.
Sure.
He'll join us. Okay, thanks, Anne. Back to you, Emmy.
Okay. Um, so, uh, yesterday the Board met to begin discussions on, particularly on the option of having, um, the special election be held separately or in combination with the state primary. And we considered a number of factors. Those include, um, risks due to one versus two exposures, risks associated with the doubling of the poll workers that would be required in a combined election and relevant legislation being considered at the state level. Laura Jem, the town clerk, was also, uh, in this meeting and gave a lot of valuable feedback. We did not necessarily come to a consensus at the time. It was a rather long meeting and decided we would just come here and share our, give you our feedback in this meeting. So, um, I figure I'll, I'll start with my point of view and then we can go on down the line and, and engage in a discussion once folks have had a chance to speak. So for me personally, I have spent the last 24 hours feeling incredibly frustrated and baffled that people seem to be waffling on this issue of risk. I'm a pretty mild-mannered person and I typically try to lead everyone to the right answer with cookie crumbs or facts. And I don't think that's what you guys need or want from us. I think you guys want more solid direction. So, um, I'm going to try and be a little bit more clear. The right thing in this case is to have one combined election rather than two separate elections. It should be a no-brainer. Uh, having two elections would at minimum double the exposure risk. And this applies to both voters and poll workers. The only scenario in which you achieve the same exposure risk for, um, poll workers in a two-election situation versus a combined, um, election situation is if they can only work one election and they must not, either not vote at all in the other election or they can only vote by absentee ballot in the other election. And that can't be mandated. I have every confidence that Laura Jem will do an outstanding job organizing and running the upcoming elections. And I think all of the Board of Health members would probably agree in this that I've been incredibly impressed with how thoughtful and thorough her approach has been to minimizing risks. But number one, you can't eliminate all risk. And number two, that only addresses risk inside the polling location. It's important to realize that exposure risk does not begin and end in the field house. It also involves every action a voter or poll worker takes that is outside of their routine and specific to voting. It includes everything from the time the person leaves their house or work to the time they arrive inside the facility. That's standing in lines, transportation. We discussed yesterday that we can't actually force people to wear masks. Chief Clark mentioned that he did not think he'd be able to enforce social distancing outside. I will say, however, that I do understand there is the additional concern about proximity of the polling staff, if you have double the polling staff. Laura mentioned, um, yesterday that she and Paul Jackson have been reviewing potential alternative layouts in the field house to try and maximize use of this space, which I think is great. I would also highly recommend the Select Board consider adding at least one additional polling location, which I believe maybe is under your purview by Massachusetts General Law, because the November election is not going to be any easier. The last thing I want to mention is related to pending legislation and, and Mark mentioned this earlier. Nothing has passed yet. So this includes the, um, the August 1st extension of the no-fault absentee ballots. It includes the Vote by Mail Act that I think actually Senator Lewis actually said to me on Tuesday was unlikely to pass anyway. And even less likely probably to be signed by the governor. It includes the early voting provision and the, um, expansion of the eligible poll workers to include minors. All of these are hypotheticals right now. And, um, so you have to act on what, what you have now. If the state ends up being helpful, that's great. But these are all unknowns. In my mind, this shouldn't even be a debate. Um, I've spent 20 years in infectious disease research and yesterday after the meeting, I, I started to wonder if I was missing some like glaring facts or something, some concept. And so I actually, um, I consulted with colleagues, infectious disease specialists, the editor in chief of the New England Journal of Medicine, and they all concurred that a single election is the safest option for all involved. So in my mind, you guys had, as a Select Board, you have to make a decision. Is double the risk tolerable to you? And I can tell you that for me, it's not. I cannot in good conscience advocate for two separate elections that would increase the risk for poll workers and voters. I just can't. We're in a pandemic. Lives are at stake. It's a really easy decision for me. And that's all I have to say. So go on to whoever wants to speak next from the Board.
Excellent. Excellent.
May I speak?
In response to something Emmy said?
Yes.
Please. Please.
So what I, one of the things I had said from yesterday's meeting is that I would double-check on the timeframe about when we have to warn the state and the voters about changing polling locations. And for a regular election, it's 20 days. Are you guys hearing me okay?
Yeah, I am anyway.
A little garbled.
Yeah, it's a little garbled for me, too.
My internet connection. Is that better?
It does sound better.
Okay. So for a regular election, it's 20 days. We have to notify every registered voter via mail. For a special election, it's 10 days. Again, we have to notify every registered voter by mail. But what I'd like to add is, and I agree with everything that Emmy said as far as, you know, the safety and the exposure, but I would really strongly, strongly advocate against changing a polling location for several reasons. We're going to have, from a process perspective, we're going to have a lot of process change as it is through the legislation changes that's coming, that we still have no idea what that's going to entail. From a exposure perspective, we can rearrange the fieldhouse so that there's less congestion, as you would say. For, you know, I've already spoke with Paul Jackson about it, and Joe Huggins and I have talked about it, too. We're going to do some measurements and rearrange the fieldhouse so that there's not as much congestion within each one of the precincts. I really would strongly like, I don't know how I can say that any clearer, that it would be very difficult for the voters. About, I would say about 75% of the registered voters in Reading have no clue what precinct they live in. They go to the fieldhouse, and we get, tell them where to go. Whereas if you change the locations, you're going to have half of the registered voters coming to the fieldhouse and sending them to a different location. So, you know, that's even double exposure. I didn't sleep last night thinking about that, and that, trying to figure out the logistics and how we can provide, you know, limit the exposure of the voters. And I just can't see that being a benefit to the voters or to the election staff. But, you know, I agree with the double exposure. I look at it from a perspective of trying to make it easier on and I understand and I agree with Emmy in that, looking at it from the, from the angle of exposure. So, I mean, whatever date is decided, we'll make work to make it as safe as possible, but please don't change the polling locations.
Gotcha. Board of Health, who would like to speak next? I need somebody to mute their sound. That's a notice to-
Apologies, yeah. Someone's coming through onto the computer.
Yeah. There's a Do Not Disturb in the top right corner, if you're on a Mac, that I always use. Eleanor, please.
I have, been a while, but probably not as long as Emmy, and I totally defer to and trust Emmy's thoroughness and thoughtfulness, and also reaching out to make sure she has the facts right, and reaching out to authoritative people. I was trying to quantify how much larger of a risk are we talking about by going to two versus one elections? And so, I mean, I'm basically just going to say that I agree with Emmy in terms of having one election. The things, a couple of things that I would want to keep in mind are, I wish that I was able to obtain a copy of this infographic. I'm a professor at Merrimack College, and the president shared with us an infographic that was helpful in describing how the college is going to approach opening the fall. And it essentially showed that the most, probably like a third of the way to decrease transmission is by social distancing. And then there's maybe 22% that's masks, and then, so essentially half, but mostly social distancing of the decreasing the transmission rate is social distancing and masks. And then things like cleaning, air ventilation, things like that make up the rest. But my point in saying this is, whatever we do, we have to make sure that people can stay six feet apart. So there's that. And then Emmy was kind enough to forward the one study that she could find, wasn't able to find other academic research on COVID-19 in particular. But in terms of absentee voting, it looks like the article that she found, when the percentage of voters who do absentee ballot is about 60% of the registered voters, then, or 60% of the people who cast votes are doing so absentee ballot, that's where your risk is higher, and that when you have over 75% of votes being cast by absentee, that's where the risk is lower. So just throwing that out there in terms of, Laura just mentioned that 75% of the voters might not know, 52/75 might not know where their precinct is, and that is underscoring the importance of going to the fieldhouse. But I think I also want to emphasize that whatever we can do as a town to encourage a larger percentage of people to vote absentee ballot, and I know that we can't send them out to people automatically, but any outreach as education, I mean, we're talking about, we need 75% of the votes to be cast absentee ballot.
Yeah, we talked about encouraging, that's-
Strong encouragement, yes.
So just so you know, that there is, one of the bills that are out there is to automatically mail applications-
Great, okay.
-for every registered voter, and then if they return the application, they get a ballot mailed to them. So if that's the case, I would say we're probably going to end up with between 60% to 75% absentees. And whether or not we can do that for the local, if it's put on September 1st, is a good question. I will strongly encourage that we do that with the state. I work with the Secretary of State's office to have that happen.
Great. A colleague of mine in Middleton was just mailed a ballot without requesting for, I believe, a local election that's in July. And I was surprised, but that's what's happening.
I'm going to have a conversation with the Middleton Town Clerk and see what she did.
Yeah, please. Kevin?
Yeah, I'll first stop by saying I've worked with Emmy for a while now on the Board of Health, and I've never seen her put a foot down like that before. So that certainly has actually a lot of weight with me. She is very good about bringing in information, but very rarely will she go out on a limb like she just did. So I certainly take that, that weighs a lot on my head. She is by far our expert in the field when it comes to these kind of matters. So certainly defer to her expertise in that regard. Just a couple of structural questions that I want to be clear about. Laura, the thought is, if you do it on a separate, you separate the elections, you're going to do it on a sad day and do a compressed timeframe, so it's only one group of folks in there? Is that correct?
Yeah, because if it's a full day, then we have two sets of staff.
Okay. Right, all right. But it sounds like Emmy, from what you're looking at, that reduction isn't anywhere near a better risk assessment, because you're still going to have those same, let's just, for lack of a better number, let's just say 3,000 voters, of which we're expecting, you know, hopefully you'll get the 75% to come in. But having to double the amount of voters coming through is a higher number, and that's kind of where you and your colleagues drive it. And even though you're going to have less workers there physically all the time, which are probably the higher-risk folks than the voters themselves, it still doesn't outweigh it. Is that kind of what you came to a conclusion on?
Yeah.
Okay. The thing I, I mentioned this yesterday, the thing that drives me nuts is not having all the information in order to best make a decision, and that's going to be tough for the Select Board, especially to set this. Hearing everything, I've kind of, I've gone back and forth on this matter for the last, probably 72 hours. I've seen arguments for both. At the end of the day, though, it's really pretty simple. From a Board of Health standpoint, you have to pick the option that has the least amount of risk. And it sounds like that is going to be a one-day event. And then you, and then within that event, as I mentioned yesterday, to make it, my feeling would be to make it even less risky, is to separate precincts by town and state. So you'd have two ones, two twos, two threes, and so forth, right through eight precincts. So, you know, by doing so, you're going to make sure that the poll workers themselves aren't 12 to a box, and rather only six to a box, let's say, for being close proximity to one another. I don't know if you have to do that. I wouldn't mind hearing my other board members' thoughts on that, if they feel like that's necessary or not. But, you know, at the end of the day, we have to do everything we can to make it the least risky venture possible.
Thanks, Kevin.
Mark, if I could just add something?
Please.
From the discussion yesterday, Chief Clark did say he couldn't enforce social distancing outside the fieldhouse. But we did discuss using a mask giveaway-like process, which would keep people in their cars until there was a place for them to park and safely come into the building. And if they were to stay in their cars, that would be the safest social distancing measure that the police can enforce when you're in your car. They can't enforce it if you're standing in a line. So there was at least, no matter how many elections and what day you have it, if we take that approach, I think that will help reduce the risk of, you know, people gathering in a line and so forth.
Okay, thank you. Other folks from Board of Health that want to chime in? No, I'm not hearing that. Okay. Select Board members, thoughts?
Mark, I just have a question, and I don't know if this will be a definitive answer, but on September 1st, unless it's changed by Secretary of State, right now as it stands, it would be from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, correct?
That's correct, and that won't change.
That won't change?
Correct.
Okay. So that's two sets of workers for, obviously, 13 hours of voting, and then the getting there and getting ready, and then the hours after doing, and I know you probably do absentee throughout the day, and any military and all that stuff, or you do it all at the end.
So the process is, is that the absentees are processed throughout the day. There's a closeout that the staff, that the election staff needs to complete. I have them complete what they're legally required to, and then I do the rest, because there's stuff that I'm not allowed to do legally. I limit, so therefore, by stating that, I limit what they do, and I limit the time that they're there, because I know that they're tired after a 13-hour day. And then I complete the rest on my own the next day. The, so they're generally out of there by 9:00, 9:30. And I guess, I may have gotten sidetracked on my train of thought, but did that answer your question?
Yeah, and how many ballots are we going to have for the first?
Four.
Four.
Well, within Reading itself, there'll be eight. Within every precinct, there'll be four.
Okay.
So-
Sorry, go ahead.
This will be adding a fifth, if we do the election on the same day.
And when you say you, they can't, the Secretary of, Secretary of State Galvin has no jurisdiction to change the hours, to modify the hours at all?
Well, he has more of a jurisdiction than anyone. I just, I can't see, whether or not they, there's nothing in place as of right now to change the hours for the bills that's in place. And what I know about the elections that I've learned over the last 11 years, I can't see that happening. Is it, could it? Sure. But I'd blame money that it won't.
Okay, that's all I have for now. Thank you. Just wanted to get that clear. Thank you.
Oh, Karen?
Quick question before I really make a comment. Just, we have not talked about early voting, and I wanted to ask Laura, and I don't know if the Board of Health has a chance to think about early voting, whether this will be a factor for any elections in the next six months?
It's going to be a factor, definitely. The current process that we have for early voting is definitely going to have to change, because it's, the way we've done it is just way too crowded to be able to keep everybody six feet apart and keep everyone safe. That hasn't been thought about as far as how we're going to do that just yet, because as of right now, we don't have to think about that until the November election. If the current bills that are in place, if one of them goes through, we'll have to think about that for September. But the, one of the bills that's in place is to change early voting for two weeks before the September election, which would be the last two weeks of August, and then change November from two weeks to three weeks, which would be the last three weeks of October. That, until I, until we get the date set and we know what we have to do for the election, then, and what's going to happen as far as early voting, then we have to look at, for another location than what we're already doing, and to allow for more space, and come up with a process for safe distancing. That's where I'll be contacting the Board of Health again.
Okay. I think, I think that's going to be really important, that the Board of Health and our election officer is able, are able to work closely together. That's a no-brainer. If I may comment, I wanted to thank all of the Board of Health members for coming today, and thank you, Emmy, for putting it quite bluntly. I've already expressed concerns that I thought that might be safe, but I am not the expert that you are. So having the Chair of the Board of Health and other members, you know, being so firm that in order to guarantee the safety of our elections and our poll workers and our residents, we should aim for September 1 and have a single election, that's really powerful, and we needed to hear that, and I appreciate your expertise. Let's see, the other, the other consideration that we're going to have is, is making sure that the voters are not disenfranchised, making sure that they are able to get to the polls. And that gets to my question about the early voting. And going back to the suggestion that Town Council made back in April, that naturally the state and our legislators will be very much focused on the state primaries and working overtime to make sure that we have the mechanisms in place to do this safely, has always sort of resonated with me, that it makes a lot of sense, and it combines and joins well nicely with safe, safety. So I am, I am fully in support of scheduling our elections, combining our elections. We just experienced one that Laura did on March 3rd. I heard her concern back then about getting it done, and she got it done, and I trust her judgment. I will volunteer to be a poll worker. We will, again, shake the, beat the bushes, and we will get you. But I would imagine we'd all support you in those efforts. Thank you, Eleanor, as well. So I think, I think that's about it. This has been, this has been really powerful, having someone with 20 years of infectious diseases comment on why this is the safest way to do this, and that's the way I would be inclined to vote.
Thanks, Karen. Ann?
Sure. So I think I spoke on Wednesday how my decision is to be based primarily on the health interests of the residents. And I admit, yesterday, when- Um, and I admit, yesterday, when I woke up, I thought that the evidence that I'd seen pointed towards uh, holding it on August first, based on the, on the fact that, um, from a memo that Laura had circulated, it had seemed that there was no way to ensure social distancing among poll workers, um, and that they would be at significant risks with a combined election. Um, and it seemed, as of yesterday morning, that, uh, August first was our best guess for when we could be assured, um, uh, the access to expanded absentee balloting. Now, those two premises have been totally shaken since, since I woke up yesterday morning. Um, uh, understanding that, um, understanding from listening in to the Board of Health, some of the Board of Health conversation yesterday, as well as what you've brought to us tonight, that there are ways to, um, to protect poll worker safety, although I still, that, this still remains my, my biggest concern. Um, is protecting poll workers, um, in the election, in the same way that I'm more concerned for grocery store workers than I am someone passing through the grocery store, getting groceries. They have to be there all day long. Um, we'll want to be, you know, make sure that we provide them with every kind of protective equipment possible. Um, it also would appear that the, the legislation that seemed, you know, that, that there'd been pushback in the House, um, to, to bring us to an August first date, that that does not seem to be, um, any kind, there seems to be no kind of certainty there as to what the Senate will do with it. Um, our conversation with Senator Lewis, whether August first stays, August first is extended, or whether, uh, the question of a date on expanded absentee ballot will not be addressed um, in this final bill, uh, in this particular moving vehicle. Um, so this, the safety and well-being of Reading residents is, um, foremost in my mind. And I, I've been utilizing, um, a framework that this, um, Brown University econ- economist, Emily Oster, uses for evaluating risk um, around COVID-nineteen when it comes to protecting your own family. And I'd kind of like to use the same, um, you know, the same kind of calculus in thinking about protecting the health and well-being of residents, framing the question. I think here that is, you know, what is the safest iteration, um, of, of elections, um, for, um, for Reading in 2020, mitigate risks? Um, how can we reduce the risk, um, evaluate risk, evaluate benefits, and decide? And I think, um, like I said yesterday morning, I woke up with a different, a different view, but the information that's come in, um, over since then, and, and particularly with the strength of the recommendation from the Board of Health, um, it seems like the, the one, um, the one election, the combined election, seems to be the safest for residents. And although for me, Emmy, it was not a no-brainer, I did wrestle with it quite a bit. Um, I, I, I think I have come to the same conclusion that you have.
Thanks, Anne. I think, um, in, in deference to all, I think we've all gone back and forth on this and, and tried to live with the decision to see what it felt like and to understand what we felt about the risks that, that would be going on here. Um, and, and like Anne, it was seeming to me that, you know, August first might make sense. Um, I think I was pushed away from that pretty strongly in my discussion with Senator Lewis in terms of just not knowing what's coming yet or when. Um, and then I think Board of Health, with each of you kind of chiming in, um, and kind of clarifying what the situation is, what the best approach would be. Um, and, and I think I've, I've turned the corner of, it is going to make sense to, um, have one election together. It is going to make sense to spend time with our delegation at the legislature to make sure that they put in as many of these provisions as they can for, for safety and make sure that municipal elections are, are included, um, so that, you know, there's not something that kind of slips around the corner. Um, I, I know that they'll all do that. I know that we'll, it, it's worthwhile for us all to, to just make sure they understand that, that's, that's really important to us as a town, um, and to hear frankly where, where the board came down on things, I think is really important. So that, that's where my inclination is as well.
Mark?
Oh.
Thanks. I, the, the, the biggest takeaway I'm taking from this, and I, I respect Emmy and I respect what the Board of Health is doing, what Command has been doing, what everyone's been doing. And risk is the biggest word that I'm hearing, and risk for our poll workers. And so for me, as a small business owner, as someone who goes shopping, who has someone who wears gloves, wears a mask out in public, talking to my kids about being safe, to me, the risk is the most, combining them, for the poll workers. And Laura echoed that the other day, and unless her tune has changed, that's where the most risk is for our poll workers. So I think having them separate and condensing the time would be more advantageous, but I understand the big picture, and we don't know what's ahead of us. It's, it's, it's May whatever, I don't even know what day it is. It's, it's May twenty-eighth, I guess. And we don't know what the coming months are going to bring, pandemic, non-pandemic, spike, not a spike. So I think what, with what's in front of us, that's what I want to deal with. And we've delayed this long enough, and I think with the guidance of Laura, who runs our elections, as much as I respect the Board of Health, they're not running the election. They're there to protect the public and give guidance, and I, I am well aware of that. I'm doing maybe more than most, I don't know. Um, so I, I, I would pivot to Laura on a lot of this, and Command, and, and, and Chief Burn, uh, Chief Burns, Chief Clark, and, and, and who is going to, and the poll workers are there for a long period of time. And then adding the extra ballot, adding the extra work will just put more stress on the poll workers. We know it would be less of a turnout for the recall election as opposed to a primary. So that's my concern, and I am going to advocate for August first for separate, to protect the poll workers. The public, I agree with Anne, as far as, when I go grocery shopping, you know, we're not in there for a long period of time. We have gloves and we have sanitizer, we have a mask, we wash our hands again in the car, we sanitize our hands, and they're there for hours and hours on end, pre-pandemic, post-pandemic, during the pandemic. Can be a long day. So I just think that it's, we're, we're sending a message to the poll workers. And that, and, and again, there, there's more voters than poll workers, but the poll workers are the ones that are standing there or sitting for six hours, seven hours, eight hours, whatever the case may be. And then there's the challenge of getting that many poll workers for a, a dual election. Uh, I know there's some suggestions, some guidance about having the young kids, high school kids help out. Um, we don't know what that, what's going to happen with that, and if the one of them partake, I hope they would. That would help out a lot, but, uh, unless Laura's changed her mind from the other day advocating for two separate elections, I'm going to stick with that. Thank you.
Carlo, uh, just one, uh, comment. You mentioned that our focus was solely on the poll workers in the early part of your statement. I just want to make it clear, it's very much the residents of this town as well as the poll workers. And we've got, you know, twenty thousand potential voters that we're taking care of, plus the exposure they have to other people. And I think we're getting a very clear message from the Board of Health on their, their feeling about that. The decision is the select boards to make, nobody else's, and we all are going to have to, uh, be comfortable with whatever decision we take. Um, there has been discussion, and the word delay comes up a few times, and I want to address that also. The decision we took in early May was that we didn't have sufficient information to provide the best opportunity to offer the safest election possible. There was no specific pressure on us for a date, other than we, we know that there are guidelines that we have to adhere to in terms of things before October. We also know there are elections coming up, and we weren't clear on when it would make sense to have an election during the pandemic. We've been given very strong guidance from the Board of Health in terms of what should happen there. We know that the state legislature feels it's very important to bring special legislation forward. We don't know what it is yet. We don't know that August first, in fact, is a date that would be able to provide additional safety. It has not, it's not, it's not signed by the governor, it's not even approved by the Senate. We don't have perfect information. Bob made the point the other day, we won't have perfect information. But I think our job is to take the best information we have and use that to do the best thing we can for the residents of this town, as well as the folks that are going to be working at the polls. In my opinion, what that's saying very strongly is, we want these safeguards to be in place. One election is going to make the most sense, and there'll be all sorts of, I'm sure, adjustments that Laura can make and that the town can make to do the best job we can with more space, with social distancing. Uh, to Eleanor's point, seventy-five percent mail-in would be the safe, eight, seventy-five plus percent, I guess, would be the safest scenario that we can do. And we talked on Wednesday, 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 we talked on Wednesday about how it's critical that we help the residents of this town understand that they have an opportunity to do that once it is the law, once it is passed. We don't have that yet. We need it. And I think, my opinion right now, is no certainty what's going to happen for August first. And if we were to vote for August first now, we put ourselves in jeopardy that we could be not doing the best thing we can for the residents. I'm not willing to make that, that decision that way. Thanks. Anne?
Um, Mark, I, I think Carlo articulated my deepest reservation, which is about the safety of poll workers in a combined election. Um, you know, that there being twice the number, greater density. Um, and I know Emmy and Kevin, uh, Emmy and then upon questioning by Kevin touched upon that, but I was hoping if you could relay that a little bit again, um, so I can, so I can hear it again. Um, why, for the poll workers specifically, do you view a combined election as being safer?
Um, so if the poll workers in the first election are not involved in the second election and do not attend the second election, there may be an exception there. Um, that being said, I think the proximity of, uh, poll workers still does not negate the, the risk due to double exposure.
In, double exposure means twice?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I, one thing that I didn't relay, um, in terms of my own wrestling with this, is that I did reach out um, yesterday to a Reading resident who is a biostatistician, um, uh, who works in, in that field. Um, and, and her view was that a combined election would be, would be safer. And she did have some recommendations for whether or not it was one or two elections, some additional considerations for risk mitigation, and I think uh, uh, the Board of Health and Laura have probably considered and covered some of them. Um, you know, reconfiguring the voting space, um, outfitting poll workers with face shields in addition to facial coverings. Um, uh, exploring what we can do around, uh, ventilation systems that can, um, can mitigate risk of exposure. Um, we have certainly discussed this, making a concerted effort for mail-in voting, um, and recruiting high school and college students, um, if possible, um, who are lower risk, although certainly not without risk. And I certainly, even if it is an entirely young person-staffed election, um, and con- I'm concerned for the safety and well-being of, of those poll workers. Thank you.
Mark, may I address Carlo's comments?
Oh, please, yeah, Laura.
So, um, my, my, it, it's kind of hard to say, you know, my feeling looked at the safety of the poll workers, the safety of the voters, and the amount of work that the poll workers have to do within that thirteen hours. I haven't changed, my focus hasn't changed that, you know, August first date would be the best. But it, but, um, neither has it changed that September first would work as well. Um, as, as long as we can figure out a way to, which, yeah, I've been able to do in the last twenty-four hours to set up the field house in such a way that the poll workers are not as congested. Um, and we, if we can get enough people, we can even break up the shifts so that they're not there for thirteen hours. But as, as Emmy mentioned, that if, you know, having two elections and, um, if the poll workers that work on August first don't work on September first, that would be okay. That's going to be impossible. We have some key election staff that pretty much will be there for all the elections coming up. So, eh, whether, if that's fair to them to have two separate days, probably not. Um, I, and I'd also like to address, you know, and, and make it clear from my comment earlier. I have a ton of respect for the Board of Health and, um, especially for Emmy and, and the information that she's provided, and, um, I just want to make it clear that I'm not, you know, I, even though I said, please do not combine, uh, go to two separate polling locations. Um, you know, that's, that's with all due respect.
And if I might, I think, again, the idea of voters in cars, I think the key is to keep as many people out of the field house at one time as is, as is reasonable. So none of this, uh, wandering around by the voter, um, you know, coming in and chatting to the different poll workers, uh, and then maybe forming long lines in different locations. We just have to change that mindset.
If I could just.
People may have to wait in the line a little longer in their car.
Right. But before I recognize you, Ken, just one other thing, too. I, I, um, wanted to mention at the Command meeting yesterday, I think Laura, you wrote it up too, but it was, it was an issue of, can the town get the PPE that's going to be required? And we know that we have, you know, three elections between, you know, now and November, three, three different activities. And the question came up, can we get the appropriate PPE, including face shields, by the way? Um, and the answer was, um, yes, the Command team believes that they can get that. And, um, it was suggested that we start that process now.
So.
Real quick, oh, sorry, go ahead, Laura.
All right, Kevin, onto Bob's comments. You know, we could very easily change the traffic flow so that, um, the traffic comes in as it normally does, but rather than parking, they drive up under the bridge and they park, they go vote, and then they come back and move on. The next one comes up and, so that way, they're in the car and in a line until they, till, uh, it, you know, there's room for them to come in and vote. We definitely have to control how they come in. There is a way to do it so that we limit them coming in to the polling place and they could stay in the car.
I just.
I'm sorry, Kevin, I think you were, you were next.
Um, yeah, I, a, a couple of questions, actually. One for Laura real quick, and then I have another one for Emmy. Um, Laura, you, are you going to go over all your, your plans with us, once everything is set? You kind of know what, what you have in front of you? Is that, is that the plan, or are you going to work with us on setting it up?
Um, that's totally up to you, uh, you know.
Okay.
However you want to work with it, uh, if you would like me to work with you to set up the plans or come up with the plans and then approach the Board of Health and, and, you know, get your approval, you, whatever you want.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't say not so much approval, but it would be good to be part of, you know, working with you and find out, listening to what you're planning on doing and, and seeing, you know, if there's anything we can add to that. That would be, that would be great. Um, moving forward, just for our standpoint. Um, Emmy, real quickly, um, do we know if we have, um, are we going to have an increased capacity for testing by the time this rolls around? It would, it would be great to test the poll workers.
Oh, yeah, that's a really good idea, actually. Um, we don't know, but that may be something that we, I think, someone.
Maybe we can put in for something like that, where it's a special instance?
Send an email about, yeah, I think that's something that we can maybe see if we can request. That's a good idea.
Okay, yeah, because that, I think that would, hopefully that would alleviate a lot of fears. I think most people are going to be concerned with the, the workers more than themselves walking in there, but also the workers themselves knowing, oh, good, my fellow worker will be testing.
Next to me, yeah. That, uh, that's a, that's a, that's a good thought.
Okay.
Thanks, Eleanor.
Agreed, good idea. Um, so Laura, I just wanted to confirm that, um, I know that we can't do drive-by voting, and I just wanted to. And I just wanted to confirm because I had read some yesterday where poll workers were bringing ballots out to people's cars. And I wondered when you suggested having people drive under the bridge, is it true that we can't do that, have a poll worker bring the ballot?
As of right now, we cannot. However, I will also, um, confess that we have done that in the past for some of the disabled, when they come up to town hall. Rather than making them walk in, we bring the ballot out to them. Um, by law, we have to have at least two people witnessing. So two people would have to go out to the car. But, um, at, at this point, we cannot legally do that.
Even with two people witnessing?
Um, that's true. We're, we're kind of like walking a fine line when we do it at town hall for absentees. Um, we have a, two reg- two voters in town that, um, insist on coming down. They don't want to do an absentee via mail. They're very, they have a lot of trouble walking. And I just feel like they have to have the ability to vote, so we make an exception for them. But, no, it's not legal. Not-
Thanks for clarifying.
Glad, glad we kept you on the call, Ray, right?
We do not want to infantize any voters. That's my line of thinking.
Mark, can I ask a question?
Please.
Um, just getting back to something Laura said earlier and, and asking what is the, the board's responsibility? Um, she expressed, oh, so both of the Board of Health, the Chair and, and Laura, um, our election, uh, specialist, or whatever we're going to call it, Chief Election Officer, um, talked about adding a polling location and ten days and twenty days before an election for the period for doing that. Does, does the select board need to be involved in that? Is that something we need to plan for? Would it make sense to plan for today?
So, no, it, the only thing that select board would be involved in is that you would make the decision about ha- adding an additional polling location. I would find that location and then come back to you and you would have to approve that location. Um, and then from there, I take it from there. So, the only thing you would be involved in is making the decision.
So with-
I would suggest that Laura and police and town engineers get together on a safety plan, present that to the Board of Health and see if they're satisfied with one location or not.
Yeah.
Uh, please.
Well, because you do have a lot of time. If it's ten days, we don't want to wait to ten days, but this is not a decision being made soon.
Yeah, I, I really can't stress strongly enough about how important it is not to change the location.
Laura, you can be in two places at once. It's okay.
Virtually, we can. Anne, you got a comment?
It's a good point, Laura, about how that even in, in theory, um, there could be more limited exposure in, in two locations. But if it's doing this for the first time and people are just going to show up at the fieldhouse and then have to go to another place, that's, that's increasing exposure.
Carlo, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I, I just like to get a sense from my fellow board members that, um, without knowing the guidance from the House and the Senate and what's going to come out officially, is it, is the, is the sense of my fellow board members, I'm getting that not to schedule it for August first and to schedule it for September first, but is the sense to do that in the next couple of weeks when we still don't have guidance? Or waiting for the guidance and a bill to pass?
So, my, my individual comment would be, um, I'm not sure of that. I think that the legislature is, is hoping to do things in the next few weeks. I don't think there's any more certainty than that. Um, what I'd want to do is make sure, though, that we don't lose our ability to do September first. Um, because, again, it's only a sense that everyone's giving that they're going to try to make September first have all the protections possible. I've heard that from everyone so far. But it isn't done. So my, my thought would be that we, we probably monitor it on a very regular basis. Um, you know, whether we're going to have an answer by next Wednesday or not, I'm not sure. Um, our next chance after that, my schedule would be two weeks later, though we could always schedule another meeting if that made sense. That's my personal opinion. Interested in other members' thoughts.
We'll see what additional information comes in. But I think my guess is September first is going to be the best day, um, that we'll have available going forward. Because to set anything earlier would, you know, were we to say, you know, I, if, if, so if we, if we didn't do September first, we would have to do two separate elections. And if we did that, and if, if we set it earlier than September first, then, um, we're going to have a compressed timeframe between two elections, um, which does not seem ideal from a logistical or public health standpoint. Um, and then if we were to do it later than September first, we would be into the fall when there is predicted there could be another, I mean, no one really knows, but like, seems like there's predictions of, um, if there's going to be another outbreak, there's likely one in the fall, and that doesn't seem ideal. So, um, I certainly, m- my best thinking right now is September first is the way to go. Um, it's, it's, you know, certainly possible some legislation will totally upend that thinking, but that's, that's where I am right now.
And Anne, just to, to, before we close on that, in terms of when to pick September first, would we be comfortable picking it just, I mean, at our first possible time to do that, which I think would be next week? Or would we kind of, uh, watch, look and listen a little bit more?
I, I think I'm open-minded on that. Um, I think that, you know, there's prob- there's a lot of folks in town who are looking for some certainty. Um, I'm sure Laura is looking for some certainty. I know Laura, you'd said to the Board of Health yesterday that you hope for certainty sooner rather than later, so you can plan accordingly.
Um, that is correct, especially if it, if you're going to go with an August first date, I need to know now.
I actually think there may be some benefit to us setting it, um, for September first in our advocacy with the legislature. Like, look, these protections need to be in place for municipal elections come September first. There, that is our date.
Thank you. Karen?
I'm so glad Anne is a member of our select board. She has really good things to say.
Thank you, Karen. Likewise.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for bringing up those points for consideration. Um, I, I, we asked Town Council, Ray, to stick around. My understanding was calendar-wise, for a September first election, the first possible date we could take that vote would be Wednesday. Um, Anne just made some really good, um, points as to why earlier, just go ahead and do that at our first, our earliest opportunity to provide clarity for everyone, plenty of time for planning, and to, um, make it clear to our legislatures that we need help and we need it in this timeframe.
Mark?
Carol?
Is, is, it sounds like there's no concern if things get hung up and for some strange reason, because we don't know, it goes to the end of June? And then we missed our sixty-four day window?
So that's kind of what I was, was sharing, it, with my, with my comment. Um, I, I don't know if it's better to lock in the first and then tell the legislators it, it's locked in, you got to do it. Or if we just kind of pressure them and say, it makes sense from a public health point of view to do it on the first, you need to make it happen.
Yeah, that, that, that's kind of where I was going with that. You, you meant August first or September first?
September first. Did I say September first?
You just said the first.
Oh, sorry, September first is what I was thinking. Yeah, sorry.
Can I toss a wrench into things?
Go ahead, and then Eleanor, you'd be next.
So, um, not that, I, I'm just telling you what the talk has been throughout the state. Um, there's no background or, uh, I guess, proof of this. But there has been mention about the possibility about not having an election on September first. Um-
Oh.
So, in that nu- there has been absolutely no legislation at this point, but there has been talk about it. So, just to be aware of that, there are those possibilities. If that's the case and you set the date for September first, it just simply means we will have one election on September first. But I can't see, I mean, my guess is it won't go away, but there is talk.
Thank you, Laura.
Let you know that.
That's a wrench. That's a wrench.
More wrenches. We're done with wrenches. Thank you.
Eleanor, do you have a wrench as well?
Didn't we pass a motion about no more wrenches being thrown?
We haven't voted on that one yet. Eleanor, please.
Uh, just a tiny comment about the September first date. If I remember correctly, yesterday on our call, um, and the school board was on, they mentioned that I think school starts the September second or third, which in response to Anne's comment about the surge means more residents being exposed if their kids are in school and then more people being in the school buildings.
Which, wouldn't that, wouldn't that mean it'd be more of a concern for November than September? Okay, yeah, I see.
Isn't, isn't school closed, though, for the election in November, high school?
Um, yes, for, on Election Day, yes.
Okay.
Um, does the Secretary of State or, or do, does the legislature set election, um, state election dates?
They're set by the, um, yes, but there's a specific pattern. Um, I don't know if it's in the Constitution or in the Mass General Law, but, um, they have to set it on a specific date.
I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm sorry?
I said, it's a tight range. The Secretary of the Commonwealth sets, the, the November election is set, i- i- is, is absolutely fixed. The primary, he has some flexibility, but not a lot. It's within a short range.
Right. That date was originally supposed to be September fifteenth, I think it was, and they changed it to September first, um, because of, uh, federal UOCAV laws. They had to change it.
Mark, I think the question on when to vote, it really depends on, um, I think both you and Anne have mentioned the types of legislation. Um, if nothing is passed for town meeting by June fifteenth, town meetings will have already happened and violated the law or not happened at all. So I think the legislature understands that town meetings are urgent and should have been decided already. Um, election stuff is a little less urgent. So it really depends whether they're combined with it, as this House did, or, or not combined. Um, I think you'll know by next Wednesday whether they've been combined or not, whether, whether a town meeting-only bill has spun off. Because really, it has to be approved next Monday or Tuesday. I know Ray has a client that's already having a town meeting.
Emmy, I saw your hand.
Yeah. Oh, sorry. Keep going, Bob.
I mean, you have two opportunities on, on schedule. The third and the seventeenth or sixteenth, or whatever date it was in, um, in Ju- in, uh, in June. Uh, either one works from logistics. Um, Laura knows now that what your objective is. So we, from a planning stand- standpoint, will start to plan for that objective. Um, so that, you know, she doesn't need any more certainty in terms of the planning effort. If somehow it doesn't work out for nine-one, well, we're, at least we're already planned. Now, the training for the election workers, I'll grant you, that's, but that's, you know, September first is far enough away, the training will work out. So I think either of those dates for you to decide is okay in terms of operationally. Um, you know, your mention about, I did have an email from Dennis in, uh, Jason's office yesterday. And, um, my sense is if the board voted a date and stuck it in their face, that's a lot more stronger than, well, we'd really like your help.
Yeah, yeah, I could see that.
Okay, well, I think that's, that's good guidance for us to, to consider. Emmy, you had a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, um, it's not clear to me how any of the legislation would necessarily change uh, or, uh, when you had set the date. Um, you know, I, a combined election is always going to be the best choice. And so I don't really see a better scenario, you know? Doing it, setting it two weeks before is not better. Setting it two weeks after is not better. Um, and, uh, a- and if they get rid of the state primary for some reason, it's still fine. You're still having the one election that you need to have anyway. So, I'm not really sure that any of that is going to change.
Unless they change the state pri- uh, Laura was saying they might change the state primary to like September eighth or something like that?
There's a, uh, so-
August first.
So, um, just to clarify the, the statement that there is a, um, group out there that is advocating to totally get rid of the September first primary for this year. Um, stating that it's not necessary to expose everyone during, uh, a, um, pandemic.
What kind of group is this?
No idea. This information has just started to circulate through the Mass Town Clerks Association.
Okay.
Group is advocating for it. It's, um, some sort of a, uh, elections, um, adversary group, nothing official.
So that does not sound like a necessarily strong, um, it's not some, not any kind of institutional player.
No.
Okay.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Karen, did you have another comment?
Just, uh, none of our legislatures have, legislators have brought up this possibility. Um, I, you know, I know we can't make decision on speculation and rumors, so we can only make decisions, as you've said repeatedly, Mark, on what we, what we know today.
I, I just try to make sure everybody has the most information possible.
No, I think it, it's making sure we know what that is, how real of a, of a possibility that is.
My, my guess would be it's not real.
Okay.
Not a real possibility.
Yeah.
Motion for no more wrenches.
I'm sorry about that.
Yeah.
I, I do have one comment I'd like to add with your permission.
Please.
This is not so much a wrench, but it might be near a wrench. Uh, which is, how could, how, how, what could possibly go wrong? Um, and to me, the, the hardest thing, and everybody should just be aware of it, is that the rules for running the primary might end up being different from the rules for running the local election. And the specific way that I think it's likely to be different, maybe doesn't make any difference, is that the, the pending legislation governing the primary would require the Secretary of State to send, um, a mail-in ballot to every voter in the Commonwealth. Um, um, there is currently, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
The, there, there is nothing currently pending in any of the legislation I'm familiar with that would, would have a similar requirement for a local election. Now, so, um, it's a special challenge. I don't think it's a wrench, but it's a special challenge if, um, it turns out that there are other differences in the way a local election has to operate and how the state election has to operate. It is certainly a possibility. Uh, so, in interest of full disclosure, I thought you should probably know that. I don't think you should, um, change your decision based on that. Just that you should be aware that, um, uh, um, if we have learned anything through the pandemic is that, um, um, strange and wonderful things seem to be thrust in front of us.
Which is something that I did mention, uh, at, at the last select board meeting when we were talking about this, and I believe also yesterday in the Board of Health, is that both elections will have to be run separately, depending on what legislation passes, as far as, or differently. And that, that's my main concern, what Ray just mentioned, is because the ballots are going to, it's actually a ballot application that will be mailed up automatically for the primary, and it will not be done for the local. So there will be comments from the residents as to why it was not mailed to them for the local.
Well, that, that's in terms of legislation pending. My impression from Mark and Bob is that Senator Lewis's office is working on trying to expand, you know, whatever, whatever legislation goes through around elections to include, um, to include municipal, municipal elections, um, in any kind of safety measures.
And that would certainly be wonderful if it turns out we're operating-
No, it's, it's definitely an if, yeah.
If we're operating under a single set of rules, that would make Laura's jo- job- If we're operating under a single set of rules, that would make Laura's jo- job simpler.
Yep.
And if we, it would probably would make it easier for us to advocate for that if, you know, to Bob's point, if we can say, hey, look, here's the date, it's the same one as the primary, don't make us operate by separate rules.
One, one would hope that at least the rules on safety would not be wildly different.
Right.
Right, right.
Whether it's early voting allowed for one, that'll be for both.
Right.
If there's no excuse absentee for one, they'd be for both.
Right.
And to reiterate a little bit about what Bob said, um, it, the the legislature is under a lot of pressure regarding town meeting. Um, and they're trying to resolve that next week, or next week at some point. They aren't meeting again until Monday, we knew. Um, they're trying to resolve that. Whether or not there's something that includes other dates um, for related to elections is not clear. Senator Lewis said that he would, if they decide they do want to put a date in there, he will advocate for September first to be the date that goes in there. And so maybe, or 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 maybe not, we don't know. But I think, uh, he certainly understands what's going on. Uh, Bob and I have both spoken with all three of our representatives and senators about this. I think they understand what we need, um, and we can decide what's the best way to try to force that. You know, if if selecting a date forces it better, then we we should definitely be considering that.
Mark?
Go.
Can you just clarify for the people watching, when you say, uh, you've spoken to Senator Lewis about September first, and right now the guidance is only through June thirtieth, and the House guidance goes to August first? Are you saying that the guidance would go from June thirtieth for mail-in to all the way to September first, or you're saying Senator Lewis is proposing skipping anything in between July thir- June thirtieth and August first, or September first?
Yeah, so I think there are two possibilities. One is, um, that the approach Senator Lewis, um, was proposing was to get the September primary legislation to include municipal elections, so that we'd be included that way. And then the second was that as it relates to the House bill, um, it's not clear if the election piece will stay or if it doesn't. If it does, through conference, he would advocate for a later date than August first.
But that would mean what, one of Carlos's scenarios where it goes through from June thirtieth to September.
June thirtieth would then get extended to a later date.
So he's working on both, it sounds like.
Right.
Right. And and that goes to my point that some of you brought up, that if we picked August first, we we could, we could go to the legislature, say, hey, we picked August first. Same way you said, hey, we picked September first, we need some help. So it goes both ways, correct?
I I think the only difference would be that we'd be saying, not only do we pick August first, but you've got one day to make it happen.
What do you mean by one, what do you mean by one day?
In in fact, so they're gonna resolve the bill as it relates to town meetings. They have to. It has to happen quickly. Whether or not it includes of many of the other provisions that were added to it is unknown. The House put them in, don't know what'll, what'll go in in a, in a Senate version from there. The risk, I think, would be that if we locked in on August first and things didn't happen as we wanted, um, we have a huge dilemma. We 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 potentially made a very bad decision.
Well, we could still add, I mean, I think we could still have the opportunity to advocate for protections to be provided for August first if we, if we, whatever date we chose, I feel like that would provide a tool for us to go to our legislators, whether it was August first or September first.
I can't imagine they'd want to leave us out hanging. Um, but it it's, uh, I guess it's maximum pressure.
But it sounds, it sounds actually like, Bob, you said that Dennis said that actually could be helpful to, for them in terms of their own advocacy with their colleagues?
He was asking if it was a must-have or a nice-to-have and what were the deadlines, and I outlined the three-day deadline as of two days ago and how, um, the board then chose to meet on Friday, in which case you had a one-day deadline.
Mm-hmm.
He was quite impressed with the fact that, uh, okay, you know, this is a fact as opposed to this is a range.
Yeah, but but come back to the top of the discussion. That puts us into two elections.
Correct, correct. And I just wanted to get that clear, because you you just, you you said the first and didn't kind of explain. I just wanted to be clear on what you and Senator Lewis spoke about.
Yeah, so the the memo that I did send to the board, I think, indicated, um, that his approach was to get September first provisions in, to be inclusive of municipal elections. Um, that's the, that's first preference. The other preference would be that if there is going to be a bill that is more than just town meeting related, that's gonna go through very quickly, that he would advocate for a a June thirtieth through September first extension.
Okay, and 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 that's, I guess, we're not the only town who wants to have some elections. And and that's where the, I guess, the, the movement or the pressure comes from. We're, we're one of, I heard, seven to eight towns, um, that need to have elections, want to have elections, doesn't sound like a lot of towns maybe don't want to combine them. I'm not sure. I'm just, you know, speculating, speculating like we've been doing for the past o- hour. So we're not the only ones in this situation. So.
That's my understanding as well.
And and where Laura is gonna be helping out on some elections and getting more experience, uh, in elections in a pandemic, that will obviously only help her and us as residents and voters for either an August first or September first election. That's only gonna help us. Um, and that will be coming in in the next few weeks, it sounds like. So it's just my, my frame of thought is just still, whatever day we pick, now there's pressure on the legislature, right? September first, there is already an election, a schedule. And and what that's gonna look like remains to be seen. So that's still an unknown, but maybe a lesser of unknown, but still of an unknown. Um, I I would hope they wouldn't have it seven to eight o'clock at night. Kind of makes no sense, but I guess, you know, we'll, we'll wait and see on that one. But a- and and that's why I'm, you know, gonna lean towards advocating for, we pick August first today, we advocate for the guidance, as many other towns will probably do, that want to have an election and not combine it. And then we're in a much better, better position to, uh, set a date, have less exposure to poll workers, and and get that over with, and so it's done. There's, there's another factor that's, um, crept into the legislation, and Ray might be more familiar. There's a handful of smaller towns in the western part of the state that still have caucuses. Um, and my understanding is the first caucus starts somewhere in early to mid-July, um, by their charter. And, uh, respectfully, a much higher percent of the population attends a caucus than would vote in Reading, you know, at the same time for a long duration. So even though they're small communities, I know there's some Western representatives and senators very concerned that that legislation, uh, be fixed and that those, you know, procedures can change so that, if you will, half the town doesn't have to show up to a caucus for four or five hours.
Hmm.
I think there is pressure on the legislature, albeit town meeting is more urgent. Elections are not too far behind.
No, that's, that's definitely true. I've seen, um, articles where the the Secretary of State wants the legislature to get the, the elections legislation done by the beginning of June, which seemed, that doesn't necessarily seem likely in terms of 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 timeframe, but, um, I, because I I read some article where he wanted to start printing primary ballots in early June, so.
Right.
Mark, can I ask you a quick question?
Please.
Anne, are 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 they working four days or five days up there? Are they working a full week?
The legislature?
Yeah.
Yes, they're, they're, they're working a full week. Um, they meet every, I think the legislature has to meet every, I believe it's every seventy-two hours under the Constitution.
Okay.
They they don't meet, they don't meet in session every day, though.
Right, 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 but.
But they're working, uh, every day.
Thank you, thank you.
Mark?
Karen?
Uh, so we've been going for an hour and a half. Would now be a time that I could maybe suggest, or somebody could suggest that we agree to vote on Wednesday?
So, um, you wanna make a motion that we would take a vote on Wednesday to set a date?
If we need a motion, I would be happy to do that.
Um, and just so we understand, um, what that means, so setting a date would allow us to set a window between August fourth?
Well, getting back to my earlier question, um, I believe I already directed this to Town Council earlier, and he confirmed that for a September first date, the, the first day, calendar day that we could vote on, that would be June third.
Correct.
And so Wednesday is June third.
That's correct. They, so, on June third, the available dates, uh, the dates that would be available to you would be August sixth through September first.
Okay.
So I'd be, uh, my one reservation is I just wanna kind of track down that, that, um, agitator group, uh, information to make sure that the, the possibility of the primary date being changed is 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 extremely remote. Uh, just what would want to, and I I actually feel like I probably will be able to do that, see that where where we should be good and be prepared to vote on Wednesday. Um, but I don't know that I want to commit myself until, I just want to be able to to look into that. Because then the the theory around, you know, having a combined election could be that that to preserve safety would be, would be shot if there, there's gonna be a election on September first and then on, then one on September eighth or something like that.
So the, the group is trying to get it to go away altogether.
Come, okay, all right. So there's, you don't think the Secretary of State's going to change the date, then?
Correct, and.
Okay, all right, fine, that's fine, thanks.
So the, the, just of the motion would be that we would vote at our meeting on June third, um, which would allow us to select, so it's the first day that would allow us to select September first um, as the date for the election and to allow the planning to start for that. Um, what are the implications that that have?
As Laura mentioned, um, it would now be August third. I mean, we can, none of us can see the future. We don't know what the legislature is gonna do, but you know, so it's August, it'd be the period between August third and September first. Just.
Just, just because you vote today to set the date next Wednesday doesn't mean on Wednesday you can't change your mind.
Okay.
Right. So, so I'm, I'm comfortable that.
Very good.
Yeah, that we should, uh, we can definitely take that vote and, as a result, would make sure it's an agenda item for Wednesday.
Yes, that's good. I'm good with that.
Okay, so Karen, do you want to make that, that as a motion?
Um, should, um, okay, um, I'll.
Do we actually, do we actually need a motion or?
I'm wondering, or if we just asked. Okay, I I do. Well, so, and the reason I ask this question is because the agenda today says potentially take a vote. So I don't know if we need to get rid of that agenda item or just take no action, so maybe you just carry this agenda item over to then our next meeting.
Yeah, or actually make it a new, a new agenda item.
Okay.
For the next meeting.
Mark?
Carlo, sorry.
Thanks. So is, I I understand what Karen's saying, and it wasn't declared that we are voting today. I understand that. But just, I guess, for the record, uh, since today is our last day to have it, August first, should we make some kind of motion on who's for it and who's against it, or that's not needed?
Um.
Procedurally, uh, I'm asking procedurally.
So procedurally, the reason that it's been on, I think, the last two agendas was to allow us to vote if we chose to. Um, we did not take a vote at the last meeting.
Okay.
Um, even though it was on the agenda that we, we could. Um, unless you, Ray, you think differently, I would imagine that we, we had the privilege to vote today. It sounds like the view of the group is we would not. Um, but we want it to be on the agenda for Wednesday, which is our next meeting.
Luckily, you can always do less than what's on the agenda. So, um, and I'm sure that you've had plenty of times, um, when you've had agenda items and you say, well, it's, we're, we're gonna skip over this one, um, for one reason or another. So you can certainly do that. If, um, if the point of a vote is to put people on record as being for or against August first, then Carlo can, in fact, make a motion, um, to schedule it and, and um, if that's what he wants to do, you know, people can vote, you know, you can see if he gets a second, people can vote.
Carlo, is that what you'd like to do?
That's kind of what I was asking, yeah. I, I, you know, I didn't know how to phrase it the right way, I guess, I'm not a wordsmith. But I would just wanted to know, it seems like of the four of us, it's, not to put words in anyone's mouth, it's like, three of us advocating for September first and one of us being myself advocating for August first. So I guess that could be in the minutes. Doesn't mean we need a vote, but I just want to understand it procedurally, because I was planning to vote today for August first. So unless something drastic happened that pointed me in a September first direction, but so that's all I'm asking is, i- if that's not required, or if 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 everyone else is okay with that, I'll just, you know, stick to what I've been saying and, and whatever information comes from now until June third or June whatever, I'll reassess everything and, and, you know, make comments and, uh, vote accordingly. But as of today, I would like to vote, have a vote for August first, but it doesn't sound like that's gonna happen, and that's okay as well, as long as that's okay.
Yeah, so I think what we're hearing is procedurally, it can happen either way. We, we do not have to take a vote. However, if you would like us to take a vote, you can make a motion, uh, to that. So, so i- i- it's, I think, I think either way, I, I think it's, it's whatever's gonna be more comfortable for you.
Me as the secretary making a motion, or is it me as a board member making a motion?
I think you as a board member making a motion.
Okay. And how do the other board members feel? Do they have any input to that at all?
So it's a little bit, it's a, a little bit odd, because to second it, doesn't that sort of suggest that you support it? So would it be like, would it, they hang out there, or is it, can you second a motion that you plan to vote against?
The answer to that question is you can always second a motion, uh, sec- second a motion and then vote against it.
I'd be happy to do that as a courtesy, Carlo, if that, if you would like to do that.
Okay, I guess, uh, to word it, and maybe I'll need some help, but I guess, uh, motion to have the recall election for August first.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, let's take a vote. Carlo?
Yes.
Anne?
No.
Karen?
No.
And Mark votes no. Um, so Bob, as we, um, we don't need to set, sorry, we won't publish the packet until Monday for Wednesday's meeting, correct? So we'll just make sure this is an agenda item for Monday. We'll just put it back on. Hopefully, the legislature will have some action that will give us some, some guidance, and then, uh, as Carlo said, I think we, we keep reassessing what's going on, but I hear clearly from some members that they would like to, to get things, uh, settled here. So we'll bring that to the next meeting. Any other business? I'm sorry. Please, Laura.
Um, and and this is just a, a matter of procedural. Is it the intent, then, that the board is leaning towards September first? I just need a co- con- confirmation for that so I can start planning.
So each person can, so, um, yes, from my perspective, is definitely leaning to the, the single election, basically, following the discussion from today.
Yes, from my perspective, Karen.
Anne?
Yes, from my perspective as well.
And Carlo?
Uh, I, I, I'm not gonna say anything right now.
Okay, fair enough. So that, that's the, again, not a vote, but a kind of a, the leanings that you're hearing right now.
Yeah, I understand. I, thank you.
Any other items that people want to discuss here?
No, I don't, I don't think so, Mark. I just have a question. Obviously, town meeting, the, the legislature for town meeting, we're hoping to get guidance by Wednesday, correct? That's our best.
I- i- as soon as possible, um, but to Bob's point, the, the longer it drags, the, the more difficult the situation is.
Okay.
Um, I hope that they resolve it quickly next week, and I hope they do it by Wednesday. Um, I know that Alan's plan is to, uh, actually, he needs to have ten days in advance, doesn't he?
Correct.
You need to have, you need to post your. You need to have, you need to post your decision and the procedures that you're going to have for a remote town meeting. You need to, those need to be posted ten days ahead of time. So that means no later than Friday of next week. Um when I say that's what it needs to be, I'm saying, assuming that the legislation passes in its present form, that uh that's the, the deadline. So if we get to Wednesday and we don't have any legislation, we um um, you know.
No more wrenches.
You can have one more, uh, you can have one more uh select board meeting on Friday, I guess.
Yeah, that's great, yes.
Yeah, no, I mean, we gotta do what we gotta do. Um.
If I could ask, Ray, what um guidance would you give on, on labeling an agenda item for what the board has to do? A vote to confirm June fifteenth town meeting or something like that?
You don't have to confirm that, that is the day.
Okay.
Um I guess, well.
If you want to.
Probably want to, I, I, you probably want to have on the agenda um uh a specific vote to consider um, to consider a virtual town meeting. And you probably also want to have on the agenda a, a vote to potentially postpone town meeting.
Ray, do we actually have to, in that vote, accept the moderator's proposal and his essentially affirmation that he's gone through the appropriate steps?
Meaning by except? No, I mean, you know, if he says he's gone through the appropriate steps, do you have to test that?
No, not test it, but approve it. Essentially, in other words, he's got to do A, B, C, and D.
Yes.
We have to then kind of accept the proposal he's given to us.
Uh yes, his proposal will include a number of things, including the technology that will be used and, and, and what have you. Um um. Uh interesting, the legislation just says that you're going to approve the request. Um um.
Should we just make it right and say, well, we accept the request and other related matters?
Yeah, I think that's, uh, I, I can, I can help. Uh I, I, I had, I didn't think about this question beforehand, but I've got the legislation right here in front of me. I can help Bob's um a- agenda writing, which he does not have to uh complete until Monday.
Right.
Got it. Thank, thanks, Carlo, for bringing that up to make sure that we, we, we get it right. And then, and the issue of if, if that's not gonna work, which I hope is not the case.
Yeah, I know, I, I, you know, I've spoken to offline about my concerns um about that, and that's just as important as everything else we're talking about.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and reiterating for us all, the, the option is to do this one-twelfth budget, and we've heard loud and clear from, from Bob and others, that that's actually really not preferred at all. Yeah, putting it gently.
I may ask Emmy to phrase my objection.
I, I think that we're learning about clarity, and it's, it's a good thing. Um, good, so uh entertain a motion to adjourn from the select board.
Sure. Uh motion to adjourn the meeting um on Friday, May twenty-eighth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We'll do a roll call vote. Carlo?
Yes.
Anne?
Yeah.
Karen?
Yes.
Mark? Yes. The select board is adjourned. Emmy, do you want to adjourn your board?
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn?
Right.
Did we have a note taker?
Yeah, I'm just. So just, so we, we just need to have a note that says defer to the select board meeting on such and such a date. That will be the extent of our minutes for today. Yeah.
Isn't that nice?
It's nice for James.
Do this all the time?
You folks have no idea how much minutes we've, we've gone through.
I'm sure.
Wait, do we have a motion? Sorry.
Yeah, yeah, Kevin made a motion.
Okay, second.
Okay, roll call. Emmy, yes.
Eleanor, yes.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.